Mr. Johnson, who's running for Board of Commissioners and is currently the incumbent. I'm Trent Adams, and I'd like to welcome you to the CCRP candidate interviews, and thank you for taking the time out of your campaign just to make this interview process. We've extended this invitation to all candidates in this race and have found that it's been an asset that aids voters in making their decision. The video will appear on the Cherokee County GOP website, and every effort will be taken to maintain its exclusivity on that site. The interview will be shown in its entirety. For the interview, we will ask you around thirty questions, but can offer no prompting. There are no right or wrong answers, only your answers. We ask each candidate the same questions. And if this is all right with you, I'll have everyone introduce themselves, and then I'll ask Jack to start the questions that we have.
Josh Staver.
Bill Darrell.
Harry Abrams. Thanks for coming, Harry.
Glad to be here.
Are you currently a member of the Cherokee County Republican Party? And how do you see your involvement going forward regardless of the outcome of this election?
I've been a member of the Republican Party, active member, for at least fifteen years, probably a little more than that. Actually, going all the way back to my youth, the first teenage Republicans Club was formed in my basement, and I was a charter member, and that was in 1968. So I've been a Republican a long time, and I plan to be a long time forward.
Harry, what is the job description of the commission?
We manage the county, although that's an overstatement because there are many aspects that we don't manage. The things that we directly manage are the county's budget and tax setting process. We also manage growth and development through the zoning and regulation of development. Those are probably the two highest-profile, most important things we do. We hire the county manager, and through the county manager, we directly manage some aspects of county government, such as the fire department, the roads and bridges maintenance, and so forth. We don't directly manage many parts of government that are under the control of independently-elected officials like the sheriff, tax commissioner, and so forth.
Would you oppose public dialogue during a commission meeting?
Would I oppose public dialogue? No, we have -- well, I mean, you have to have some kind of reasonable decorum and meeting management, but we welcome public input during the beginning portion of our meetings every time. And I support that.
What plans do you have to present to prevent the ball ground recycling issue from happening again?
Well, I think we've learned an important lesson there, that things that can go bad often do. I don't think there's any doubt that any of us would never -- any of those who've been through that experience would never vote to underwrite an enterprise like that going forward. So I think it's a moot point, really, going forward. Now, someday, who knows, somebody else might, but I don't think anybody who's been through that experience would go through it again.
Current county law states the noise ordinance is enforced during the hours from 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. And when the marshal's office is closed, who should make the contact during these times for this and other issues like animal control?
Call 911. Now, often, these are not true emergencies, but after hours, that is the best choice, to call 911. And if it's a serious matter, the marshal will get somebody out.
Harry, what's your position on the bill to make certain offices, the sheriff, district attorney, county commissioners, county clerk, make those nonpartisan?
I'm happy with them being partisan. You know, it's interesting how the times have changed in Cherokee County. At one time, all local officials really were Democrats. I remember those days. I was not a Democrat, but all, literally all, elected officials in the county were Democrats. Then we had one lone Republican for a long time, and then, over the course of two elections, the pendulum swung. It swung so fast, it just made your head spin. And now, they're all Republicans. So it's almost like it's one party anyway. You know, one party is almost like nonpartisan because it's all Republicans running against Republicans. But I'm a Republican, always have been, expect to always be, so I'm happy for them to be partisan races and filled by Republicans.
What is your position on term limits?
I don't have a strong position on term limits. You know, I see both sides. When I ran for this office, I didn't think I'd serve more than two terms. Here, I've served four. If the voters want me, I'm willing to serve again. So, you know, term limits are sort of self-controlling at the will of the voter. They serve a purpose. I'm not necessarily opposed to them, but I'm not out pushing for them, kind of neutral on the issue.
Are there any conditions under which you would advocate raising the millage rate?
Over the early part of my term in office, we saw rising property values, every year, consistently rising property values. And every year, we lowered the millage rate to offset those rising property values. That situation turned around for a few years in 2009, 10, 11, and property values fell. And we raised the millage rate to compensate for the falling property values, just like we had done in reverse during the earlier time. So yes, I supported it then. Total revenues didn't change. In fact, they fell some, but we kept it -- so we kept the so-called revenue-neutral rate, which means that, on average, a property owner who has not made physical improvements to his or her property continued to pay the same rate, same total dollar amount before and after the change. So I'm fine with that. Now, a net increase, one that actually drives up the dollar value of taxes for everyone? No, we've not done that. Well, I take it back. Back in '04 and '05, the fire tax rate was raised a little bit, net increase. I supported one of those two increases. I voted against the other. The reason to raise it was to bring the fire staffing up to a two-man-per-truck minimum staffing. Before, we really -- we had many of the rural stations, most of the north-end stations, really, were staffed at just one firefighter per truck, and that was not working as well as we'd hoped initially. So I've supported that. Other than that, I've not supported any net increases in taxes such that the average property owner would actually pay a higher tax bill.
What are the unemployment rates in Cherokee County?
It's good by comparison to almost everywhere else, around seven percent, coming down, I think. That's not good in absolute, but Cherokee County has enjoyed, historically, one of the better unemployment rates, lower unemployment rates, in the metro Atlanta area. Usually, it's between us and Fayette County for number one or number two. So by comparison to others, we're doing well. Could do better, though. The whole world could be doing better. It's still higher than it should be.
Harry, for solutions to the traffic and other infrastructure issues, do you support the regional approach, such as the Atlanta Regional Commission, or would you support another method of dealing with these issues?
Well, truth be told, our biggest road problems are state roads. You know, we do reasonably well on county roads. In spite of pretty rapid growth, we've kept up fairly well. I'm not saying that the county roads are the best ever anywhere, but they're pretty good. They're not our big problems. Our big problems are all state highways. We can't locally fix state highways. I mean, just for one thing, we can't even legally do it, and for another thing, the cost is just too great. The cost to just improve Highway 20 east of Canton, that's something that's been needed forever and is in the works over the long run now, would dwarf our county road budget. So there really is no choice but to look to the state to help with that. Now, how the state manages that, you know, I really can't control. State roads are, in effect, regional roads, too, so I don't have any opposition to a regional influence on the management of state roads, and even possibly some county roads, because some of them rise to the regional level, too, but primarily state roads. We don't need regional management of most county roads. We do need regional or state management of state highways.
There are a number of issues the agriculture industry is facing in Georgia, including water use, state and federal regulation compliance, tax reforms, and immigration reform. Do you have a plan to address these issues for the agricultural community in Cherokee County?
Most of those are really not under the purview of the Board of Commissioners for Cherokee County. I would do what I can. We have a law on the books that's not being enforced because of court cases still pending on the point that our illegal immigrant ordinance is based on. Water issues, you know, we have a little influence over water issues, but mostly, that's controlled through the Water Authority locally, the state at the state level, and then there's the Regional Water District Board that also has some influence there. I'm a friend of farmers and one of their best friends as long as they farm. I've always really tried to support farming because a lot of what makes Cherokee desirable is the agricultural rural flavor that we have, especially still in North Cherokee County. Where sometimes the farmers and I differ in our desires is when they want to stop farming and go to develop their property, then they and I don't always see eye to eye. But as long as they're farming, I'm as good a friend as farmers will find.
Should the candidates for public office be required to release their tax records?
I don't know the answer to that. You know, I've got nothing to hide in mind. If everybody else releases theirs, I guess I'll release mine. But in general, probably not. You know, I don't know that candidates need to release their tax records. But I have no objection. If the others do, I will. I'm a salary person, you know. Mine are simple compared to some people. You know, I make money, pay taxes through withholding, and usually pay some more at the end of the year.
Is Cherokee County large enough to have a county police force?
It probably is large enough, but that's not really going to happen, not without a change in state law. Some years ago, the legislature passed a law that said no new county police forces could be formed. That really is a testament to the strength of the sheriffs politically, is that they didn't really want to see that happen. So I don't think that'll happen in Cherokee County, or it's not likely to happen. I will say that I think we get excellent police service from our Sheriff's Department at a good price. If we added another layer, another separate county police force, I have to believe it would cost additional money. So I'm pretty happy with the service we get now and not really looking to change that.
Harry, what do you think the commission's role in providing information infrastructure, such as internet communications?
We've had a little discussion along those lines. Again, that's not something we can directly do much about. You know, technically, legally, we franchise these utility companies, including the cable, TV, and phone companies that are the providers of those services, but as a practical matter, we have no influence over them. We don't really have any choice but to franchise them, and that franchise really just is -- maybe it meant something one time, but it doesn't have any teeth anymore. We do have a need. I'm not an expert in this field, but I'm generally aware that, at least in the northern part of the county that's not served by AT&amp;T for telephone purposes, that we really don't have the kind of telecom infrastructure that would support, say, a data center or that type of high telecommunications-intensive operation. And that means we're out of the running for those kinds of economic development opportunities. So I'd like to see more. The competition is helping, I think, as the, you know, the TV and telephone companies are almost becoming indistinguishable from each other now, and they're battling for that business, and I think that will help solve the problem over the long run. I don't really have a better idea than that. I wish I did.
Do you support the public release of the ball ground recycling center audit?
Absolutely. I very much want that released. You know, and here's why. I know that I've done nothing except what I've told right from the beginning, which is that we didn't see the downside of that one coming. Should we have? Maybe. In hindsight, sure, it seems clear. I can tell you, it wasn't as clear then. It didn't seem nearly as clear then as it does now. That I promise you. But I know that we did nothing illegal or unethical, and I know that the audit and the investigation results will bear that out. So it would be my great hope that it would be released before the election. I have made that request to the folks in charge of that a couple of different times. They tell me they are working on it, and I think there is some promise that it might be released before the election. I certainly hope so.
Currently, the legal aid for Cherokee County costs around $700,000 per year. Do you see any way that this could be reduced?
By legal aid? I assume you mean the law firm that the county retains. It's not quite that much, generally. I mean, it may have been that much in one year. It runs more like, I would say, $500,000. It is high. I wish it could be less. When we had an in-house sole attorney, it was less than that. I'm not opposed to the idea of going back to that, but I don't think it can go back to a single attorney handling everything. I think we've just grown too much for that. There's too much legal activity. You'd be amazed. Almost every day, I get some notification that the county's been sued about something. I'll give you a classic example recently. Tragic accident. Fire truck hit Broadside. A car did seriously damage the occupants of the car. But the situation was, that car was stopped in the road to turn left, to make a left turn. Had the wheels copped to make the turn, really bad thing to do. Tell your kids, "Don't do that." Car comes up, an impaired driver hits that car from behind, drives it directly into the path of an oncoming fire truck. There was no opportunity for the fire truck to do anything at all. I don't think they were running lights or siren. It was not an emergency call. They were just going down the road. But you get hit by a fire truck in Broadside, you're going to get hurt. No fault, you know, on the part of the fire truck, at least none that we see, but, you know, we're going through a lawsuit over that, and that kind of thing happens very often. So I'm not sure we can get it down much. I'd love to see some opportunity to reduce a little bit, and I think we have actually taken some steps to reduce a little bit. I think if we were at $700,000 at one point, we're certainly below that now.
I would still like the ball ground recycling center on.
It runs about -- it was 25 years, so it's something close to that now. It's 21, 22 more years.
Harry, what can Cherokee -- what can the Cherokee County Commission do for economic development?
We do a lot there. We do it through the Development Authority, now known as the County Office of Economic Development. The biggest thing that we've done in the past, and it's been a reasonably successful strategy, is to develop industrial parks. The county, through the Development Authority, we've developed three major industrial parks, one at -- well, really, four now, four. One at the airport, one at Canton, down on the river, behind the Canton Library. The Bluffs Park was actually a project of the County Economic Development jointly with the city of Canton, and now, the new Cherokee 75 Office Park, Office and Industrial Park on Highway 92 near Acworth. That one has been a huge home run. The first two I mentioned have also been very successful. They are substantially built out, the airport and the Canton Cherokee. Bluffs has been a little slow, very slow, I'm sorry to say, although that has now been taken over by a private entity. Technology Park Atlanta, as promised, bought the county out on that in spite of the fact that it was developing very slowly. So those are the big things. The biggest thing we have for that type of economic, quality economic development prospect, the kind that brings lots of good jobs all at one time, needs a site that's ready to go. They don't come in and say, "I'm thinking about moving to Cherokee County. Let me see if I can find some place." You know, they come in and say, "I want a place. You show me something, and I'll compare that to what somebody's showing someplace else," and it needs to be ready to build. So that's been the main strategy. Now, we have not put as much money into economic development as some counties do. This is something we've looked at recently, and we've asked the cities, and some of the cities have agreed to put in some more money, and we've agreed to match whatever the cities will put in to increase the staffing, and not just staffing, but the budget, basically, of the County Office of Economic Development. What we really want to do now is go from a be-ready-to-respond standpoint to an outreach standpoint, one that would allow them, the budget to advertise in business publications that reaches people who are decision-makers here, and also to actually travel and be at trade shows and conferences and have a table and advertise and promote Cherokee County and develop one-on-one relationships with folks, rather than just waiting for the state or Georgia Power or somebody else to send a prospect our way and to deal with them. So that's kind of the next step, and that's the step we're trying to take now. We have increased that budget. They are beginning to do those things. We'll see how it works. I hope it helps.
The county, excuse me, Cherokee County currently owns a number of properties. Should these be sold?
Well, some should and some shouldn't, I would say. Of course, we'd love to sell the recycling facility or lease it. More likely, we'll re-lease it to somebody else, a new operator to take it over. We're actually negotiating with someone now that looks reasonably promising. We stopped short, at my urging largely, from making a deal with the last prospect because the price was just too low. The people we're talking to now, it's not going to be a wonderful deal, but it is, I think, at at least a barely acceptable minimum. We have a few other properties that we really don't need. One that's been brought to everyone's attention is the former City Club property. We bought that with the idea of creating a wellness center that would serve dual purposes, one to serve county employees in a wellness standpoint to try to help improve their health and reduce medical costs. And it would also, because the facility would be there, would provide a kind of a low-budget, low-cost, senior-oriented health facility for the general public. But like everything that has multiple purposes, the purpose was never really clear, and it never really has developed. So that -- we could sell that facility. Beyond that, well, and we have some -- we bought a park property that we're willing to sell. It's in the very south corner of the county, down off Highway 92, and we believe at this point that it's a better economic development site than it is a park site. We bought it from the Dunn family, so we call it the Dunn Track. And so we've opened the idea of selling that property, and if we did, we would put that back into -- put that money back in the park bond and use it for some other park project. Or maybe not. Maybe just use it to defray the park bond and not put it into another project.
Do you support a T-Sploost initiative?
The T-Sploost was the best idea that the legislature could come up with, and before it was over, you couldn't find two people anywhere who wanted it, people on every side of every political spectrum, all united to oppose that. Now, I'm not even quite sure why. It's an interesting political case study. It was an opportunity to get some more funding into transportation infrastructure. Georgia really lags behind in that. It's one of the lowest, on a per capita basis, in the state in putting money into infrastructure, and the state roads show it. Not that they're poorly maintained particularly, but they're just not keeping up with the demand. That's obvious here in Cherokee County. So something needs to be done. I'm not exactly sure what the answer is. That one, at the time, seemed like maybe it was the answer, but politically, it ended up as a serious loser. So I don't have a great idea. I think that the legislature needs to figure out a way to divert some resources into road expansion if we're going to keep up. Whether a T-Sploost is the answer, I don't know. It certainly would have to be a lot different than the last one if it's going to have any chance to fly. I do, as I said, I think you can't fund state road improvements, not of the scale we're talking about around here, out of county road budgets. It's just not there. So the state or some sort of regional approach is going to have to be necessary.
Where can the county budget be trimmed?
Of course, we try every year to trim the budget. We trimmed it during the Great Recession. We had an early-out program. We didn't have to have forced layoffs. We were able to avoid that. And one of the ways we did was we had an early-retirement program that offered just a small incentive to tip the scales for a lot of folks, and they took it. The deal was, those positions had to be held vacant for at least three years to make the thing pay for itself and get us kind of through the recessionary period. Of course, now, people are clamoring to fill those positions as the three years expire. So, you know, if I knew another place the county budget could be trimmed, I would have trimmed it. We have, by the way, let me brag for a second while we're on this subject. We have, when you look at property tax rates and sales tax rates, sales taxes that help support the same kind of programs that property taxes did, we are the 11th lowest tax burden county in the state out of 159 counties. So that's incredibly low. Basically, our taxes are rock bottom. The counties that are lower than us are mostly very rural counties that don't offer the kind of services we offer. For instance, many of them don't offer countywide paid fire service, which we do. So we have incredibly low taxes, and at the same time, we have pretty good services. Somebody would have to show me which service they want reduced, and if they do, well, let's talk about that. You know, everybody can always find something that's somebody else's favorite service they want cut, but then you go to cut their favorite service, you'll get complaints about that. We cut the library hours. That created a huge stink. We're looking to see if we can, in this budget that's coming up, restore some of that money to the libraries so they can get closer to the hours that they operated before, but I'm not sure we're going to be able to. Now, that's just another desire that's on the list that may or may not be able to be filled, because we don't anticipate a net tax increase, as we talked about earlier. There is a little growth in the tax digest, real growth that can produce a little bit of real growth in revenues, but that's really spoken for already. So honestly, you know, there are a lot of places we have cut the budget. If I knew of more, we would have already cut them.
Harry, do you support interbasin transfers of water?
That's a complicated question. I think it's probably over most people's heads who profess to have an opinion about it. Inherently, no, I don't like the idea. It seems wrong. It just seems like a bad thing to do. Now, some of that happens anyway inadvertently through, I don't know if it's inadvertent, but, you know, there is water that is taken out of already, of Lake Allatoona, that ends up going back into Chattahoochee, just through the Cobb County's water intake and sewer output level. Now, that may be a relatively small scale. I don't think it's appropriate to, I'm sure it's not appropriate, to put in a massive pipeline up into Dawson County to pull water out of Etowah and put it into Atlanta and go out into Chattahoochee. I know I'm opposed to that.
What is the current state of the Aquatic Center's bond and finances?
The Aquatic Center is part of the park bond, which was a $90 million bond to fund recreation facility improvements across a wide variety. The Aquatic Center is kind of the centerpiece of that. I guess it is the single most expensive project in it at something like $15 million, I believe. I forget exactly that number, but it's an expensive project. So that project is paid for out of that bond. Taxpayers are paying a bond tax millage rate now. It's about .75 mils approximately, three-quarters of a mil roughly, which is about, for a $150,000 home, which is what we call typical, is about $45 to $50, under $50. So, and that's covered not just the Aquatic Center, but all the other park programs that are underway or still planned. We still have a couple more big park projects planned under that bond. The great thing about the Aquatic Center is it is completely self-sustaining with regard to its operating cost. As you might imagine, an aquatic center like that, a big two indoor pools, a big outdoor pool, is pretty expensive to operate, but the user fee structure and the use that it's getting is fully covering the operating cost. So while the voters voted in 2008 to approve that bond referendum and pay for the construction costs of that facility, they're not paying one dime toward the operation. The users of the facility are paying for the operation. Some of them grumble when they go and have to pay $5 or whatever, but that's keeping taxpayers from having to pay anything to fund it.
What is the current state of the county in general?
That's a big question. I think it's great. I think Cherokee County is absolutely the best place in the world to live. We have it all here. We have, right in the shadow of Atlanta, one of the biggest and best metropolitan areas in the world, we have a small town and rural or semi-rural environment and a quality of life that you can hardly get anywhere else this close to a major city. So, you know, we have that huge, huge natural advantage. It's a treasure, really, that we have here, and one that I am committed to protect and preserve. We're going to grow. We've been growing. That's going to continue. The county's land use plan is built around a scenario that says we will double in population over the next 25 years to a build-out at around 450,000 people. That scares the heck out of some people, me sometimes, but there's not really any avoiding that. But still, that's better than growing out at 800,000 or 900,000 people like Gwinnett or even Cobb County. And we can do better. We can learn from the lessons from those counties. Cobb hasn't handled their growth better than Gwinnett, I think. Gwinnett's kind of the poster child for a county that grew without good planning. So we're trying to learn from that and protect that. Now, I've already talked about, we have exceptionally low tax rates, second lowest, borderline first, but right now, second lowest in the Atlanta metro area, with Fayette being just barely lower than us. Great county services, great schools. I can't claim credit for that, but it's a wonderful thing we have here, some of the best schools in the state of Georgia, and certainly better than average even by a national score. even by a national standard. So, I think Cherokee's, the state of Cherokee County is absolutely great.
So, I've got a few tough questions for you here next.
All right. They had to come.
Have you ever had any license revoked or not renewed for calls, or been the subject of professional discipline, or cited for breach of ethics, or unprofessional conduct by any bar association, disciplinary committee, court, administrative agency, or other professional group, or have you been expelled from any organization? And if so, please explain.
I think I was kicked out of the Beta Club in the eighth grade because my grades dropped below an A average, and you had to maintain an A average. Other than that, I don't think I've been kicked out of any clubs. So, no, that was a pretty easy question. No, I've never, never faced any of those disciplinary revocation actions and never been expelled from, from any club except the Beta Club that I recall.
Have you or has any organization or business under your control ever declared a bankruptcy or been sued or currently facing liens or other financial issues? If so, please explain.
No.
Have you ever been arrested for or convicted of any crime excluding minor traffic offenses?
No.
Please describe one instance in which you faced an ethical dilemma and how you resolved it.
That is a tough question. I, I get them all the time when my friends ask me for help. And of course, you know, I want to help my friends. I want to help everybody. So, you know, I've, I've been on, on the computer and phone trying to help some, some guy I don't know at all today with a, a problem he's having with the building department. But when, when a friend of mine asks me for that, I have to really think carefully, is this ethical? And I have to, I have to decide for myself, is that something I would do for anybody else? And if and only if the answer is yes, then I move forward and try to help them. But if the answer is no, if this is something that I really wouldn't do for somebody else, and I can, I know, I know when that's the case, then, then I just don't do it. You know, I just stay out of it and tell, tell the friend. I've actually had cases where, you know, I've had to look friends in the eye and tell them, "No, I, I'm voting against rezoning your property." And that's been tough, but that has happened to me. And that was, the first few times I did that, it almost killed me to have to look a friend in the eye and say, "I'm voting no on that." And probably that means they didn't get their rezoning. Some of them are not necessarily my friends anymore, to be honest with you. But those are some that I faced, and, and I think I've handled them all well.
Are you currently connected to any outstanding unpaid taxes in any way?
No, I've paid all my taxes. I've got more to pay before April 15th, but I will get them paid.
And now, is there anything else that we should know that has not been addressed? And this is basically your time to just say anything you'd like to?
Wow. Now, that's the toughest question of all, and one that I wasn't prepared for. You know, a couple of ways I can go with this. I, I'd like to brag on the county. I'll do that a little bit more. I've been on the Board of Commissioners for 13-plus years. End of this year will make 14 years. I served a partial first term and then three full terms after that. At this point, as we've discussed here, the condition of the county is really, is really excellent. We have, have good and in many cases, world-class level services at some of the very lowest tax rates anywhere, certainly anywhere in Georgia. And Georgia is low compared to most other states as far as local taxes go. So, we have a, a really exceptionally well-managed county, and I'd like to think that I've had something to do with that. I know I have had something to do with that. We have made one notoriously publicized blunder nine years ago in agreeing to underwrite the cost of, of a facility that, that ended up costing far more to the, to the county than we ever thought it would. We thought it would cost nothing. We thought it was a cheap, free way to solve that problem of getting that, getting that facility moved out of the residential area that it was in and into a more suitable industrial site. Turned out to be a, a bad way to solve a bad problem. And, but we didn't see it coming, and we certainly didn't do anything illegal or unethical. And we've absorbed that cost, not by increasing taxes. Taxes were not increased as a result of that or anything else. We have not had a net tax increase except for the fire tax that I mentioned a while ago. And I guess you could call the park bond a net tax increase, but it was, it was approved by the voters directly in a 2008 referendum. We've not had any tax increase in the whole time I've been in office. The average taxpayer, at least excluding fire, because it has gone up a little bit, but the average taxpayer for their general county M and O bill before I took office and today, if they have not improved their property in some physical way, made it more valuable physically, not just because the market made it more valuable, they're paying the same dollar tax today that they did 12, 13, 14 years ago. Some are higher, obviously, some are lower. That's, that's the way averages work. But on average, they're paying the same. So, it's really been a great run. And, and as far as the cost of the recycling facility, we've absorbed that, and we still, after absorbing that fully, paying the whole freight, and we won't always have to pay the full freight. We'll get a new operator in here eventually who will pay at least some of that cost. Probably, disappointingly, not all of it, but, but a large portion of it anyway. So, that cost will actually go down at some point. And we still are in the enviable position of having rock-bottom taxes and, and excellent county services. So, I guess that's the wrap-up. You know, sometimes when people, people want to jump on me about that one case, I, I feel a little bit like a, don't, don't mean to sound like I'm as egotistical maybe as this will sound, but I feel a little bit like the guy who, the quarterback who's won the Super Bowl, and everybody jumps his case Monday morning because in the first quarter he threw an interception. You know, it's like, okay, yeah, we, 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 we made a mistake there, no question. But overall, you know, overall, in spite of that mistake, we're batting better than anybody else in the state. That's my story.
Well, thank you very much for taking the time to do this. I really appreciate it, and the voters appreciate it too, having you.
Enjoyed it.
Thank you, Harry.